Hello. Mr. Blue. How you doing, buddy? How you doing?
Fancy.
They cut it almost. It was a government decision. I've been kind of tired. I think that's upon the title. That's crazy. I guess I just was careful. The only time I ever hit it, shit, get an answer. We're so all about.
Yeah, we did a job down there. It was such a heavy one.
Isn't it amazing with those times?
All right, we will get the planning zones for August 2024 underway. Let me make the announcement again. The Bluegrass Experience RV Park has been postponed until October at their request. So if you're here for the RV park, we're not going to hear that tonight. It will be in October. All right, first item on the agenda is approval of July invoices.
I'll make a motion for approval.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposition, say nay. Approval of the July 11th minutes.
I'll make more.
All right, Mr. Stone.
Second.
And Mr. Garrett. I have a motion and a second for approval of the July minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And the minutes pass. Approval of the July agenda. And so we know that we've got two items of old business that have been postponed. D Times and Kentucky Bluegrass Experience. Are there any other changes to the?
Just item D under new business is also postponed. That's something that's already been noted up to date. The Georgetown.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah. Item D Georgetown Commons has also been postponed.
Besides that, there's no changes.
Okay, thank you. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion, Charlie.
Mr. Jesse.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have one item on the consent agenda, I believe. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right. And in order to move things along tonight, we will move item C under new business, PDP 2024-34, Rumpke CNG and Parking, a preliminary development plan to construct employee parking areas with CNG fueling stations and associated infrastructure located on West Yessen, Yessen, Yessen? How's that pronounced?
Yusen.
Yusen. Way. That is eligible for consent approval unless there's anyone here that is opposed to that or would like to hear it. Is there anyone that is opposed to that item? All right, seeing none.
I'll.
I'll make a motion that PDP 2024-34 be accepted on consent eligible.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes?
Do you need to know who signed?
And no. And at this time, I would also, I need to note that Ms. Canfield, Mr. Vest, and Mr. Green are not here this evening. So if representatives from Rumpke will come up to see Mr. Perkins, we can sign your paperwork and be out of here. All right, the first new item that we're going to hear tonight is a, yes, thank you, ZMA-2024-32, Country Boy Brewing at Highview. This is zone change request for .95 acres from B2 highway commercial to B5 general commercial park located at 2325 Cincinnati Pike. And this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. And if we have anyone that is planning on speaking tonight, you should have signed in at the podium. If you have not signed in, please do so, and we'll get Mr. Perkins to swear you in. Is there anyone going to speak tonight on any subject?
Mr. Perkins has it.
Anyone who plans and at some point comes to sign in, you stand very sure I can. You swear from the state you can make the truth of the best you can. Don't everybody stand up. The state you're about to make the truth is best for your information and belief. Yes, so you. Thank you.
People don't normally pay that much attention to you, Charlie.
Okay, we'll get things started this evening. We do have two zone changes in front of us, so I'll get into the mechanism and methodology that we consider when we're approaching those. First application here is ZMA 2024-32. The proposed use is a zone change for operation of a small distillery. That's what the applicant states. Again, we're not quite to the concept and development plan stage, so as of this point, we're just considering a zone change, whether it's appropriate or not for the area in the future. The current existing zone is B2 highway commercial. It does allow for some intensive uses such as gas stations, drive-through restaurants, things of that nature. The proposed zone by the applicant is B5 planned commercial and/or general commercial park, just under an acre up here on Cincinnati Road. Some of y'all may be familiar, it's the old Highview Meats establishment, MUDS Meats, just, you know, between Georgetown and Sadieville, right there in the middle almost. So this is the property in question, just about an acre over there, north of Rocky Top Path. Let's see here. So the mechanism and methodology when we're considering zone changes. A zone change has to be in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan or in absence of such a finding that one or more of the following sections should apply. When we look at the comprehensive plan, we consider the goals and objectives, the future of our community, and also our future land use map. All these concepts should be pretty fresh with you all. As far as sections A and B that can also complement or supplement these considerations. Section A essentially speaks to the concern of whether or not the existing zoning classification as it stands is appropriate, or that the proposed zoning application is appropriate as well. Section B can also speak to changes around the area, whether they be physical, economical, or social in nature within the area. All of these things can be used to consider whether or not a change in zone is appropriate or if the current zone is inappropriate. This is our future land use map as it pertains to the area in question. While it is B2 commercial now and it has longstanding history of having been since 1982, and I'll speak to that again in a moment, the future land use is considered as agriculture pretty much all the way around it, with low-density residential to the north. That slight pink up there is the area towards the interstate interchange that has seen some growth in commercial use and is set for expansion of more of those uses along that corridor. So going back to our mechanism and methodology here, KRS 10213, section one, again asks us to consider the comprehensive plan when we're looking at potential zone changes. The comprehensive plan provides the guidance for these requests. Currently, again, the proposed future land use for this area is agriculture, so in that sense, the zone change is not supported by section one or the statute. However, sections A and B do provide supplemental information that can support this potential zone change. Now specifically, we're looking at the goals and objectives in this section. The community forum chapter, goals and objectives are supported by this potential zone change in regards to protecting existing structures and supporting preservation efforts. There is an existing structure there that is suitable for the proposed use. Again, concept aside, we are looking at the zone change as it affects the future as well. If we're looking at economic growth, allowing this to remain commercial in a different fashion, also will diversify Scott County's economy, create more local business job opportunities, and encourage small-scale commercial development, encourage entrepreneurship, et cetera. Again, these are all goals and objectives as set forth by the comprehensive plan, which has recently been approved and adopted. And also, it does speak to the heritage chapter and its goals and objectives, which are to protect and enhance historic and cultural landscapes of Scott County. Again, this area has longstanding commercial use. Let's see here. A little history on the property itself. Zoning came into the county in the early 80s as a pretty new concept. Again, that space had been used for more than 50 years in a commercial fashion. Most recently, it was a butcher and small grocer. Before that, I believe it was a truck stop along the highway as US 25 was the main corridor there. So it has longstanding precedence to where the future land use map designation of ag doesn't necessarily make sense. With the longstanding ingrained commercial use of this property, downzoning it to ag just doesn't seem very appropriate. I mean, as such, the history supports it remaining or becoming a different commercial use. And in part B, also, again, we spoke to the increased commercial development to the north along the interstate corridor. With the expansion of that commercial up there, it makes sense to also encourage other surrounding commercial use of this nature. And anytime I go back in time, I like to provide a little exhibit of, you know, how I got there. I know you probably can't read that, but that's a screenshot of the minutes in the 80s where this property was brought into compliance and supposed to be in zoned ag. It was existing business use, so they just went ahead and brought it into compliance. Mr. Perkins may or may not have been there. So a little about the B5 zone. Again, I spoke that B2 does allow for some more intensive uses that you would expect in main thoroughfares around town and elsewhere along the Belt Line and bypass. B5 does encourage clustering of commercial development. It leans a lot on context. You know, what does the site look like? What is its future? It discourages strict commercial development, and it provides and requires orderly development so that adverse impacts on surrounding areas are minimized. Again, this is a mostly agricultural or rural area, so it is very imperative that any future commercial use takes this into consideration. Our B5 zoning mandates that. It encourages, again, orderly and systematic development and design standards. It also encourages general commercial activities to locate in areas that have access to major thoroughfares. Again, this is along US 25, just south of the interstate, not too much further north of other interstate interchanges and main thoroughfares. And the B5 permitted uses also speak to not only this concept that the applicant has presented, but other uses that may be beneficial to the area in the future, provided these folks either don't follow through with their concept, or in the future, you know, they move on and somebody else comes in. Specifically for this concept that's been presented, retail stores, especially those which need large storage or display space, also those that can comply with performance standards as set forth in this section and noted above, specifically bottling or package works, which would play into their concept they're proposing, manufacturing and packaging of food products. Again, you know, micro-distillery, et cetera, falls into that role. And then again, this is just for fun, but research, experimental, and testing laboratories, distilling kind of falls into that. But as you can see, a lot of these other proposed uses that may differ from this, B5 mandates that they can only occur when they are found to be compatible with each other and surrounding areas as set forth by the planning commission. So any other change of use or development plan would have to comply with strict B5 design standards. This is an aerial view of the property. I just wanted to kind of demonstrate the topography of the land as well as the existing canopy coverage, et cetera. When we're looking at zone changes, especially those that abut up against residential or agricultural areas, as part of the zone change, not separate from requirements of a development plan, the applicant, upon approval, is mandated to do different types of screening that separate this new commercial zone from whether it be residential or agricultural. So we kind of look at the land as it sits to see what may or may not be appropriate. Also, some of these restrictions and requirements can be waived by adjoining property owners with consent. The applicant may or may not choose to do different things with these buffers that make sense, both aesthetically as well as that fit with the lay of the land and the current appearance. As far as buffering up against ag zones, it's very important to make sure anything that's within the buffer is non-toxic, is safe for farm animals, et cetera. Essentially, we're looking at like a six-foot no-climb fence, as well as a tree every 40 feet and associated plantings, width of 50 feet or so, trees 35 feet off the property line to allow proper growth that doesn't affect the neighboring properties. Again, some of this may be determined by the lay of the land, the use, the size of the impact, and whether or not the adjoining property owners even care to have the buffer. So moving forward, we generally like to work with the applicant, make sure it makes sense, make sure it's appropriate and fits our mandates. All in all, staff concludes that the proposed zone change is appropriate for the use and suitable for the lot and the parcel itself, as it provides for orderly development of commercial activities that limit adverse impacts around the surrounding area. It also encourages systematic development design, pedestrian safety, landscaping mandates, parking and circulation. In regards to that, also any development plan that moves forward, being that it's on US 25, the state will be involved in making sure that entrance and exit is safe, make sure the parking makes sense, all that. And that could also affect some other aspects of their development plan, assuming they were to ever get there. Again, we're still at the zone change process. And most importantly, all of the things we've discussed satisfy KRS section 10213 by supporting and complementing the comprehensive plan and the associated sections and goals and objectives. So based on the findings, again, we are recommending approval of the zone change. The conditions of approval are pretty standard with a zone change. They must meet all applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision and development regulations. And then if they were to gain approval and move forward, they must submit and follow through with a preliminary development plan. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me, and I believe the applicants as well as their counsel is here available for you.
Any questions from the commission?
I have a question. I think I see one of the magisters back there. Do you have anything?
Mr. Observatory, have constituents asked me about this, come to learn. It will come to us if the commission approves it, the zone change, if it comes to court.
Well, I have a question. So the neighbors were, the surrounding people that live in that area were notified of this zone change?
All applications follow our standard notification process, and, you know, they provide proof of that to be in their file.
Emails, phone calls concerning this?
Letters. With the zone change, we also require public notice in the paper, and they also have a sign on the roadside.
And you got anybody that's came to the office or phone called?
I had one phone call, and their concern was with the terminology. Again, general commercial park, I can understand, in certain contexts can sound like a big development. However, again, B5 leans heavily on context and appropriateness, you know, being that this is a one-acre parcel with certain surroundings and enclosure and just the general things that would fit. Again, as you recall, the language states that the uses have to make sense, and you guys make that final decision when a development plan or a concept comes through.
With the manufacturing of the distillery part of it, will the sewers there handle?
Received no negative comment from Georgetown Municipal Water Sewer. I believe this location is still on septic. Again, that's going to be a health department concern. The applicant may clarify, so.
Mr. Holstater?
Mr. Chairman, to answer Mr. Jesse, that's the reason I found out about it is because some folks on Rocky Top contacted me, so I'm pretty certain they got a mail. And they contacted me and asked me, they couldn't be here and ask me if I'd sit in, so I had time.
Can we ask if he shares with any concerns directly that they gave him?
Yeah, let's let the applicant make their presentation, and then we'll hear from everybody. John Woodall?
Did you hear otherwise?
Oh, no, I was just asking a question.
No, I mean, did you hear otherwise that folks weren't notified? I was asking that question.
Thank you all. My name is John Woodall, and I have the pleasure tonight to be here on behalf of Country Boy Brewing, these gentlemen sitting here behind me, and I'm going to let them do a lot of the talking, because I think you'd rather hear from them. They're certainly a great success story, but I think it was back in May or so, I saw on Facebook that Highview Meets and Jefferson Mudd had posted, or whoever does their Facebook had posted that they were going to close. And at that time, I didn't have any idea what DH and his partners had planned for the property of anything. I just know that it kind of hit me, because I've been, like these guys, I've been going to that place, and maybe some of you a long time, a long time. Took my first deer there. My sons took their first deer there. When my family built Deer Lake, I ran sandwiches out of there, back and forth at my dad's direction. So, you know, I agree entirely with Mr. Shirley said about the comp plan and the goals and objectives and how we comply with those. A lot of the times, that gets subjective, but I believe his opinions are spot-on, and in fact, we submitted a justification letter that should be in your packet that echoes many of the same concerns. But I look at context when I think of a site like this. I mean, it's been out there a long time, and yes, it's commercial, and, you know, the land use map may show that it should be agricultural, but it never really, it hadn't been that in a long, long time. And at least for me, it's kind of an iconic spot. Well, it is an iconic spot. And so when I found out what DH and his partners were going to do with this spot, and that's why it's important, I think, you hear from him exactly what their plans are, I was really excited, because I still have a farm in that area. And, you know, Scott County continues to be the fastest-growing county in the state. I think that part of the county, we're going to continue to see more growth. I think there's a lot of potential when all the sewer stuff gets straightened out for Sadieville, and, you know, for families that frankly, I mean, just look at the median price of a home, what it is down here in the flats, if you will. It's just like it is in Lexington. You know, what are young professionals going to do? I mean, when I got out of school, you could afford a starter home. But now, you know, I don't know, and I think things are going, so I think things are going to continue to push that way. So this is just a fantastic repurposing use for this site. And, you know, if you look at the, it's just a concept drawing that was attached. I mean, the plan at this point is not to do any harm to this building, but to enhance it. There'll be some modifications made to it to do what they want to do. But there were some questions at the workshop about, you know, what's the topography, and how are we going to be able to use this? And so that's why I thought it'd be a good idea to bring this aerial, because it shows you, both of them are aerials of the same property. One's with vegetation looks like a summer satellite picture, and the other one is fall or winter. But it shows you just how, you know, wide this property is, and there was, Rhett talked about the landscaping requirements that go along with a zone change that are separate apart from those that go along with a development plan. And they've talked to the MUDS about that, and they're not opposed to any type of waiver or whatever we would need, because what jumped out at me about those, and we'll deal with that in the development plan, was the 35-foot situation with the trees. That could put us, you know, right up next to the building. But in any event, I think now would be a good time to, let's let DH and Tyler, and I don't think CJ wants to say anything unless somebody's got a question about the money. But just explain what they're going to do here, why they came upon this, and maybe that'll answer some of the concerns about the sewer capacity. I don't think that's going to be an issue with what they're going to do, but let's let them go ahead and explain that.
Really quickly, can you guys make sure your mics are on? Your light is on green?
Yes.
I got a text that most of them are off, so. You got to hear your voices. JD wants them.
Thank you, John. Thank you, members of the commission, and everyone for your time this evening. My name is Daniel Harrison. I've got the distinct pleasure of knowing several of you all on a personal level that are in the room today. I'm a Scott County guy at heart. I grew up on Pugberry Road in North Scott County, which is not too far from said establishment that we're talking about. I was fortunate enough to buy a piece of property about a mile from where I grew up. It's off US 25. It's exactly, I think, 1.3 miles from this property that we've acquired and that we're wishing to do some stuff with. I'd love to tell you I'm not emotionally attached to it. I had to make the case to my business partners that I thought it was a great business opportunity. I thought we could do a lot of stuff with it. My heart wasn't in it, that it wasn't a dream for me, and then I had to tell them that I was completely lying. I am emotionally attached to it. My heart's in it. It's a dream for me. I've been going there since I was a child. Much like John mentioned, I took my first deer here to get it processed, took my son's first deer here. When I was too young to do much hunting of any success of my own, I used to go there and hang out and watch the old guys bring their deer in. And it's a place for those of us that called Northern Scott County our home. It's a place that represents a lot of memories, and it's an icon. It is a historic spot there. And I'm happy to call the MUDS family, friends. And when I heard that they were selling, my mom called me, and she was in tears, because she wondered where we were going to get our country hams from, where we were going to get our ground beef from, where we were going to get all our lunch meat from. I called Jefferson, and I said, hey, I don't know what you're going to do with it, but, you know, when I'm back in town, I'd love to talk to you. And I had no intention of doing anything with it until I met with them, met with their family, and I said, hey, you know, if there's ever opportunity that we could do something there, I don't know what it would be, please call me. And so Jefferson and Jeff called a couple weeks later, went out and talked to them, with this saying, I'm a big person, I don't believe in coincidences, I believe the Lord works in mysterious ways. And Mr. Tyler Gomez, who's sitting behind me, was a longtime patron of the brewery. When he was a young guy working for Altech back in 2012, 2013, he came in our establishment all the time. His father worked at Altech, and he came back to the brewery. We hired him a little bit. Tyler, how long ago?
Six months ago.
Six months ago, but he has a very big background in distillation. He's worked in distillation for the past several years, for Beam Suntory, for Moonshine University in Louisville, and educational distillery there. And everything just fell together. We thought, hey, if there's any way we could buy this property and turn it into something very, it's 1,300 square feet. We know it. All my friends in the brewery and distilling world have said we're crazy. This place is way too small. It's the opposite of where you guys are going. Your company's getting bigger. Why are you trying to get smaller? And I said, it's much more than that for us. This is something we want to do for Northern Scott County appropriately. We've had to talk to the MUDS, make our case to them. That's why I told the Planning and Zoning Commission, I said, we can get grilled as much as we need to, but, you know, talking to them and talking to Ms. Mudd and Jeff and Cheryl, and winning them over with our idea is much more rigorous than I think anything else anybody could throw at us. Because to them, it's their family legacy, it's their family history, it's their name, it's on the line. And so it's a lot of pressure for us. I'll let our business stand, our record stand. We believe we run a very tight ship at our breweries. We have three locations now, Louisville, Lexington, our original location, and our
I got a text that most of them are off. You got to hear your voices. JD wants them.
Thank you, John. Thank you, members of the commission and everyone for your time this evening. My name is Daniel Harrison. I've got the distinct pleasure of knowing several of you all on a personal level that are in the room today. I'm a Scott County guy at heart. I grew up on Pugberry Road in North Scott County, which is not too far from said establishment that we're talking about. I was fortunate enough to buy a piece of property about a mile from where I grew up. It's off US 25. It's exactly, I think, 1.3 miles from this property that we've acquired and that we're wishing to do some stuff with. I'd love to tell you I'm not emotionally attached to it. I had to make the case to my business partners that I thought it was a great business opportunity. I thought we could do a lot of stuff with it. My heart wasn't in it, that it wasn't a dream for me. And then I had to tell them that I was completely lying. I am emotionally attached to it. My heart's in it. It's a dream for me. I've been going there since I was a child. Much like John mentioned, I took my first deer here to get it processed. I took my son's first deer here. When I was too young to do much hunting of any success of my own, I used to go there and hang out and watch the old guys bring their deer in. And it's a place for those of us that called Northern Scott County our home. It's a place that represents a lot of memories and it's an icon. It is a historic spot there. And I'm happy to call the muds, family, friends. And when I heard that they were selling, my mom called me and she was in tears because she wondered where we were going to get our country hams from, where we're going to get our ground beef from, where we're going to get all our lunch meat from. I called Jefferson and I said, hey, I don't know what you're going to do with it, but, you know, when I'm back in town, I'd love to talk to you. And I had no intention of doing anything with it until I met with them, met with their family. And I said, hey, you know, if there's ever opportunity that we could do something there, I don't know what it would be, please call me. And so Jefferson and Jeff called a couple of weeks later, went out and talked to them with this saying, I'm a big person, I don't believe in coincidences. I believe the Lord works in mysterious ways. And Mr. Tyler Gomez, who's sitting behind me, was a longtime patron of the brewery. When he was a young guy working for Altech back in 2012, 2013, he came in our establishment all the time. His father worked at Altech. And he came back to the brewery. We hired him a little bit. Tyler, how long ago?
Six months ago.
Six months ago. But he has a very big background in distillation. He's worked in distillation for the past several years for Beam Suntory, for Moonshine University in Louisville, and educational distillery there. And everything just fell together. We thought, hey, if there's any way we could buy this property and turn it into something, it's 1,300 square feet. We know it. All my friends in the brewery and distilling world have said we're crazy. This place is way too small. It's the opposite of where you guys are going. Your company's getting bigger. Why are you trying to get smaller? And I said, it's much more than that for us. This is something we want to do for Northern Scott County appropriately. We've had to talk to the muds, make our case to them. That's why I told the Planning and Zoning Commission, I said, we can get grilled as much as we need to, but, you know, talking to them and talking to Ms. Mudd and Jeff and Cheryl and winning them over with our idea is much more rigorous than I think anything else anybody could throw at us. Because to them, it's their family legacy. It's their family history. It's their name. It's on the line. And so it's a lot of pressure for us. I'll let our business stand, our record stand. We believe we run a very tight ship at our breweries. We have three locations now, Louisville, Lexington, our original location, and our flagship location that's here in Scott County, I can say proudly. We want to make this something that enhances the community, doesn't detract from it. Probably it'll have to be run seasonally if we're open for tourists coming through. Wanted to come in and get a nod to a cold deli sandwich or some summer sausage or something like that that we're going to do out of there. But it'll be where Tyler gets to start the distillation arm of Country Boy Brewing, just like we started the brewing arm in a small 4,000 square foot block building in downtown Lexington. We'll start the distillation arm of the company in a small 1,300 square foot block building in Northern Scott County is our dream. So, I would love to tell you, having this great visionary, I could tell you exactly what the property's going to look like. I can't do that because I'm not that person. But I know the building has to stay. The essence of the place has to remain. We'll do a nod to the family and their legacy and a lot of stuff that we do there. And then Mrs. Gloria Mudd still lives across the street, so I have eyes on me, for lack of a better word. But it's an honor to be able to even have the opportunity to do a project in this scope and something that I can, hopefully my kids can be proud of one day.
DH, tell me, maybe Tyler's a product person. What's this still look like? How big is this still?
Tyler?
Just, so the still's going to be 800?
Come up to your mic.
The still's going to be a 100 gallon Vendome still, so it'll be probably no, maybe a foot taller than myself with a belly about that big. So it'll be very, very small, very minimal impact on any of our utilities. So, we're just really trying to nail our craft and our product and get going and start.
Rhett, can you back up slides that showed that one, another one there? Back up. Right there. Mr. Woodall, in your letter, it says, however uniquely located to urban residential zoning area. Is that yellow? Is that residential?
That's what it's supposed to be.
Okay. But does Sadieville city limits come out that far?
We're in the county.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, that was all I was, I just wanted to make sure that I was, what I was seeing was what was being seen here that they jabbed there. Okay.
But other than that, we agree with the staff's recommendation and they're led by their conditions.
Okay. I mean, naturally, there's a lot of trees and vegetation in that area anyway. Is there going to have to be much done to separate it from that residential area?
We have had some initial kind of meetings to talk about it. And there'll probably be some site visits done by staff because I don't, it's probably hard to see topography there, but it is quite terraced.
Yeah.
As we move back. So not only may there just be natural screening, as it stands, depending, I think there's some rock fences and things out there as well. These folks could tell you better than me. And again, they could be eligible for waivers by the joint property owners, but between the aesthetic goals of the applicant for the project, the requirements of the natural state of the property, I'm sure it'll give good balance. And again, there won't be screening requirements for the development plan should they get there. And those may be able to play a role as far as at least limiting the area of impact. So whether or not the entirety of the property needs something done to it in the same cohesive way, we'll be getting there.
Okay. This shot here, I'm assuming these are vehicles right there, aren't they? There's not another building on the property.
No, sir, those are vehicles.
There is a small building, if you look right to that, the very top right corner.
Yeah.
There's nothing in it now. When I was little, before we had city water, that's where my dad took his water truck to fill the truck up with water. There was a two-inch water main that came in there that all the people that had sisters filled up from there. But that's just a block building that remains there. Other than that, it's some building on the permanent structure on the property. That's true.
Any other questions for the staff or for the owners?
Do you know if it's septic or is it a safe sewer?
It is on septic.
It is on septic.
Yes, sir. So they have a bathroom there now that was used by customers and of course them. And with no issues. So for us, of course, to meet, I assume, and Mr. Rhett can speak to this, if we were to get through everything, we'll have to make it ADA compliant and everything like that. But we foresee no issues. The operation there, and if you want to get really into the weeds, Tyler can get really nerdy and talk about distillation, but it's a very different process than we do in Georgetown. At our facility here with production and byproduct, there's virtually no, nothing that goes down the drain that would go there with what he's planning on doing there, especially on the scale he's planning on doing it at.
Thank you, DH.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we've had presentations. Is there any questions from the audience? Yes, sir. Come up here to the stand, sir. Come up here to the stand, state your name, please, for the record.
Is there going to be distribution of the beer that you make right there?
To answer, ready, come up?
Yeah. What was your name, sir?
My name's Glenn McAteer.
Okay, thank you, Glenn.
Yes, sir. So, when you say distribution, in our world, that means beer that would go out to get shipped out to other places, no. Would we sell beer to be consumed on-site at that facility seasonally in the summer is our plan now, yes?
Can I answer your questions, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, if there are no other questions, I will take a...
But does Rick have something that he wanted to share with?
Rick? No, he said he was just listening.
Not going to?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion for approval of ZMA 2024-32.
All right, I have a motion in a second for approval. Ms. Singer?
I got a question. Aren't we supposed to stand up and talk about this before y'all approve it?
Well, that's what I asked you to do. You came up and...
I thought I signed the list and I was the only one. I'm not. I had a question.
Well, come right up and ask. That's what I thought you...
You all met on it, whatever.
I thought you had come up to ask a question.
Okay. I mean, to me, I live right down north, less than a quarter mile, right on the hill as you go down. And I, no offense to them, but I oppose it because when they're, one, if you look at it, it's on a curve, pulling in, pulling out. You know, I went up to Mudd's several times taking deer up there myself, went up and got a sandwich or got meat or anything. But it's dangerous pulling in and pulling out. And anything that y'all do is not going to help the viewpoint of getting in and getting out of there. Two, I oppose more alcohol on that road. We have several accidents. In fact, my daughter, I just almost lost them. My daughter, my brother, son-in-law, and three kids this past year just down below us in a three-car collision at night. Where I'm coming from, back in 72, my father went out and didn't come home because a drug driver hit him. He left not only a wife, he left eight kids. Followed us. And I don't, it's not that I disapprove of alcohol, but when you put alcohol with driving, people make wrong decisions. And the roads on 25 is bad enough. They don't have no shoulders. Look at how many accidents we've already had on 25 in the past couple of years even. Big trucks still go through there. To me, it's a danger. And like I said, I commend you for doing what you want to do, but at the same time, I don't want to see it at my house. And I don't think you all would want it at your house, right beside you. I mean, I don't mean nothing against you or anything like that. But when you mix alcohol with driving, it's not a good combination. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAteer. Appreciate it. Any other, yes, sir?
At least to address the entrance exit parking concerns, again, and the second concern, I ask the commission to recall that we are still just in the zone change process. However, assuming these gentlemen, maybe ladies as well, get approved and do enter a development plan stage, all the ingress and egress will be overseen and mandated by the state as it is a state thoroughfare. So they're going to have to do what they have to do to make it safe. And also to that, you know, the second concern, I'm sure the state will be involved in consideration of the type of establishment. And the applicants can probably tell you what other regulatory bodies that they have to answer to and comply with, you know, as an establishment that manufactures and sells alcohol. But again, we're just here in the zone change stage. All these other concerns will be addressed as they're mandated by the different governing bodies, assuming these gentlemen move forward with their development plan.
Thank you. Yes, I'll reiterate that, that we're just, what we're voting on tonight is not how this is going to operate or what they're going to operate, but the zone change from B2 to B5. And they will have to come back for this body again with information about the construction and those deals. And that would be, that entrance off of the highway will be addressed at that time. So this is, it's just the zone change changing from B2 to B5. Okay. Again, Ms. Singer, would you like to continue your vote?
Nobody else wants to say anything? Making one. Okay. Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay. Mr. Woodall feels, see Mr. Perkins up here, he'll get you legally taken care of.
It's just the rec show tonight.
You know, and I'm down one. You know, if y'all guys want to do the development plan, why not? That's an easy one. I didn't even take any notes off.
Exactly.
So our next item on the agenda, ZMA 2024... Hold on. I close a public hearing on Country Boy, and I will open a public hearing on ZMA 2024-33, 1081 Stampin' Ground Road, a zone change request for .324 acres from R1B, single-family residential to B1 neighborhood commercial located at 1081 Stampin' Ground Road.
Okay, thank you. Again, we're looking at 1081 Stampin' Ground Road. It's just under a third of an acre, right there in Stampin' Ground Road between 460 and Betsy Way before the bridge at Great Crossing Park. It is currently zoned R1B, which is a single-family residential zone. These folks have provided an initial concept of a contracting business. Again, we are not in development plan stage, even though concept is important initially. We must consider the zone as it is now and in the future and how it could progress beyond this initial concept. B1 is geared for neighborhood residential, or excuse me, neighborhood commercial use. Here's the site in question. Again, this is an east-west orientic, or excuse me, north-south orientation. Wait, yes, east. Yeah, east is up, excuse me. So anyway, the parcel in question is outlined there for you in red. Adjacent to it is the church. And again, if you continue down Stampin' Ground Road, you reach Betsy Way, which cuts off towards the school campuses, the Great Crossing Park, and then across the bridge to Stampin' Ground proper. Here's a more zoomed in view of the site. Again, it's immediately adjacent, another residence as well as the church there. There is now currently a manufactured building on site. I believe it's 40 by 60, two bay building, two garage door. And again, recent survey of the lot is submitted by the applicant, just confirming the size. And we're back to our mechanism and methodology, all alliteration aside. KRS 10213, the section one, again, we must consider whether or not the proposed zone change is complementary or speaks directly with the comprehensive plan, future land use goals and objectives, et cetera. And if not explicitly to section one, subsections A and B may be considered, whether the change is appropriate for one reason or another, or if the current zone is inappropriate. Or per section B, if there are major changes of economic, physical, or social status to the property itself or the area surrounding. Here's the future land use map for the area. Being adjacent to schools, parks, et cetera, this area is designated for what we call quasi-public use. That does encompass, you know, libraries, government buildings, parks, schools, et cetera. A lot of larger nondescript uses that don't necessarily fit another zone and could be used by the general public or, you know, at large. Across the bridge, even though you see a lot of residential and some commercial there, it is zoned future use of ag with low density residential there to the west. And a little further south, and we'll get there in a moment about more, that is some commercial use. Going back to whether or not this proposed zone change speaks to our KRS 10213, in regards to the comprehensive plan, again, as a B1 business use, it does not directly speak to a future quasi-public land use description. Therefore, it's not explicitly consistent with the plan and its intentions. However, the B1 zone does allow for uses that can be considered quasi-public. So even though it's a commercial zone, in the future, if this concept that the applicant has submitted is not executed or changes 10, 20, 30, 50 years down the road, the B1 zone does allow for government offices, public facilities, churches, parks, recreational opportunities, hospitals, and other institutions. So while it is a commercial zone, the future use could align with the future land use map depending on what may or may not go there in the future. The zone change does request some of the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, specifically in regards to economic growth. Specifically, you know, it calls for more small-scale economic opportunities, local businesses, entrepreneurship, provision of local services. And B1 is explicitly that. B1 is neighborhood commercial. It's geared towards small-scale, local establishments that provide services or goods to the immediate community around at a small scale contained. It's not an obtrusive use or zone such as a B2 or a mixed use, things of that nature. It's meant to be small-scale neighborhood-based. Some more context, which I believe plays into, or I have concluded, plays into KRS, you know, part B here. There are other B1 zone parcels here in this same corridor that also provide explicitly neighborhood services. There's a kennel, there's a vet clinic, and just across the bridge as well is another contractor's business. They operate out of a property just across the bridge as well. So this type of use and zone would not be uncommon for the immediate area. If anything, it would expand, you know, consistency as far as types of uses there that you would expect to see, little neighborhood services. They're all within 1,000 feet or less or as close as 400 feet. And this is just a little more context here. Again, right there in that sea of yellow there, which is low density residential, you see the property in question outlined in red. To the north up there in that other red parcel that I've highlighted is the contractor's office as well. Down to the south on the eastern side is the larger vet clinic campus. On the west side of Stampin' Ground Road is an associated kennel as well. All of these properties are zoned B1, too. So it would be complementary and somewhat consistent with what that corridor sees. This is a concept drawing as provided by the applicant. Again, this building is on site now. They may speak more to it. But this is just the size and shape of the establishment this application intends to operate out of. Again, we are not to the development plan stage, just showing the intent and size of the operation the applicant proposes. This is the site as of not too long ago. Again, the building is erected, but I just kind of wanted to illustrate some potential challenges for general commercial use in the area. The site, again, just like the one we saw before, does have some terracing to it. Once you get up to what would be the building area essentially, it's about six to eight feet above the road bed. So depending on what the state may say for access, being that this is on a state-maintained road, the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet will dictate whether this entrance is appropriate, what improvements may be needed for a commercial use. Again, that'll all happen once we get to the development plan stage. Just to illustrate... Just to illustrate, again, the kind of the terracing of the property is elevated above the roadbed. So. And also, you know, some of the surrounding properties, again, being that a change of use, change of zone that abuts up to residential and ag, they will be expected upon the zone change to perform certain types of screening as spelled out by our ordinances. Again, however, if the surrounding property owners, you know, waive those requirements, or for some reason, existing conditions are deemed enough or satisfactory, that's taken into consideration as well. Generally, again, we're looking at, you know, six-foot no-climb fence, trees 40 feet on center, et cetera. Just some more speaking to the topography of the area and also kind of how it lays in the road. There is no floodplain on this property, as it is terraced well above the roadbed as well as the floodplain. But it just, you know, it drops off sharply there. This property does kind of lie right there in the S-curve between 460 and Betsy Way. It does see some pretty heavy road traffic seasonally and at certain times of day for the schools. And it's a main thoroughfare between 460 and Stampin' Ground proper. So there is consistent and steady traffic flow, especially certain times of day. You know, for a commercial business of this size and scale, that can be both a benefit or detracting, depending on how yourself and the state may look at it as far as safety of access, things of that nature. But again, once they get to the development plan stage, these applicants or whoever, upon approval, the state will mandate how they get in and out of that property. All in all, staff concludes the proposed zoning is appropriate for the proposed use and suitable for future users. Again, B1 would allow for some of the quasi-public uses the future land use map calls for, assuming there was no longer a neighborhood commercial use established explicitly commercial. You could see some quasi-public uses in this zone. It would encourage and promote a continued network of small-scale neighborhood commercial service providers. And it does support some of the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, specifically in economic growth, as it speaks to small-scale neighborhood establishments, entrepreneurship, local business. So staff is recommending approval of the zone change. Again, it's the same two conditions we saw with the previous application. They must adhere to all of the requirements set forth by our ordinances and subdivision development regulations. And if this is approved, any user, including themselves, must return to us for preliminary development plan approval. And more restrictions and guidance will be put in place at that time. And I'll entertain any questions from you all, or I believe the applicants are here as well, if you'd like to speak with them.
Yes. Do we have any questions from the staff, I mean, for the staff, from the commission?
Yes, sir.
Come up here to the podium and state your name. And I believe you came in later, so Mr. Perkins needs to swear you in.
Yeah, swear affirm sentence you're about to make through the truth, the best of your information believed. Yes. And your name, sir? Eric Smith.
Eric Smith, thank you.
I'm at 1076 Stampin' Ground Road. The first thing, as far as the traffic that was mentioned, I would like to have safety concerns for that piece of property and the traffic, the amount of traffic flow that does come through for the mornings and the evenings particularly, but also to get a very thorough recommendation from the sheriff's department and from the ambulance services for the frequency that they are up and down that road. They are there quite frequently because going on out Stampin' Ground Road, of course, people act like they don't know how to drive. But for a business there to be entertained, there is a substantial amount of traffic that a business there would only contribute to the hazards closer to the church, the residencies, and up toward 460. Also would like to get clarification, if somebody has some kind of documentation, because I was told by a neighbor that that business was potentially initially supposed to be on the other side of the creek around the corner going out Stampin' Ground Road. And is it infringement that a business building has been placed there prior to this voting? And those are the things that I would like to have addressed, please.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Yeah, obvious concerns. Can we take that in reverse order? Has the building been placed there too early?
Admittedly, staff had concerns that, you know, the building was there, et cetera. It kind of seemed like a maybe potentially cart before the horse scenario. But almost immediately after receiving the application, I did speak with building inspection, make sure all permits were appropriate and building was inspected. Building inspection advised me that everything was compliant, and that, you know, it's within the property owner's rights to do so according to building inspection, so.
It was in the owner's rights to operate a business?
To construct the building, sir.
To construct, but there's not a business operating out?
No, no. As soon as the application came in, you know, these applicants are not represented by, you know, a consultant or anything of that nature. So there has been extensive conversation about what can and can't be done before and after this approval. So they were immediately advised that no commercial activity until we make it through this process. And also, if this approval was received, then, you know, you'll have to submit a development plan. The applicants have been given, you know, a suggestive list of those type of service providers. And, you know, the applicant did provide, you know, somewhat of a concept site plan that helps us wrap our head around their intentions. But as far as have we made it to the development plan stage yet for this concept? No, we have not. Building inspection is aware and has inspected and permitted the building that's on the premises.
I guess are the applicants going to speak relative to the type of business you're running, or the traffic, or just to, I think that hits on maybe some of Mr. Smith's other concerns or questions?
So it's not per se running a...
You want to state your name, sir?
Oh, John Stevens, sorry. It's not per se running a business from that location. It's more of a, to store trailers and tooling and equipment inside of. The drive has been there since the 40s, 30s, 40s. So there would actually be less traffic coming in and out of the property now than there has been for residential. So it would just be a drop-off tooling, pick-up tooling, of that nature. So there won't be per se people coming unless they're coming to look at some type of a display for what kind of remodeling they want to do to their home, of that nature, picking a colored tile, stuff of that nature. So there'll be very, very minimal foot traffic. Sorry. We've had several neighbors from all around the area that were very appreciative that we've cleaned the property up as much as we have over the road. We continue, or we plan to continue to make that look better as we go. We just, it's the segment of getting a lecture grant, getting everything done, permitted to complete it. So we're kind of waiting to this direction to see if we kind of growl in front of it, or put down payment, whatever. So I hope that answers any, any questions.
Yeah, just what the, so it's not going to be like a busy storefront?
No. It's going to be a place to park trailers, keep construction equipment inside of, nothing else, and clean.
Okay, what kind of security would you have? Because that can attract people who, you know, would prey upon your business or those trailers, those things.
I think that would probably come more on the, on the development side of it. But as of right now, just probably it would be a basic security system.
What was the question around the creek, it being on the other side of the creek?
There was a letter that came out pertaining to a vote that I didn't see earlier when this initially was changed. I guess this was initially being thought about. And I just had a neighbor mention to me that they thought it was going to be down further around the road, so.
Yeah, there was nothing to do with this.
Melissa Stevens.
That is actually Mr. Coens, the welding shop that's around the corner, because I got that same letter.
Okay.
So just to kind of clarify that. And in regards to the security, that's why the building has really no, like, windows. In our garage, windows are up high, so it doesn't attract people wanting to look in and see that there's something of any value. It kind of deters anybody from really seeing what's inside, just for that specific reason, because we don't want to put anyone around us in any kind of danger.
And it's also pretty well, like, from the, from the church security likes it, it's never really dark there.
As I stated in the work session on Monday, if this property fanned out behind the church and went all the way to the football field, I could see it being quasi-public, or it could get a library or some type of government or school building in there. But it is so small, there, there just isn't any way, you know, that a quasi-public building would go in there. And because of the other commercial buildings in the area, I think that it fits fine for this area.
To, to your point, and to clarify the language, you're exactly correct, sir. The quasi-public land use category does specifically say larger uses that may or may not fit or complement other areas. You can, granted, our office used to be a library. It's a little different. But, you know, hospital, school, you know, the church next door is good context as well.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
But because of the small size of this...
Yes, sir.
But before they could go forward with this building opening up and so forth, this traffic concern would have to be addressed. Have you got the state?
Yes, it's, it'll be a multiple checks and balances. Again, you know, the development plan will be considered by staff and also reviewed by Kentucky State Transportation Cabinet. You know, they'll be the final determinant on, you know, how safe is this entrance and exit. Being that it's a B1 use, generally, our traffic studies are triggered at, you know, graded than 100 trips per peak hour. This zone specifically tailors things down to low traffic, low impact. Any greater use, you know, that you would see out on 460, you know, gas stations, et cetera, or whatever, are not permitted, will never be permitted in a B1 zone, not even as a conditional use. So essentially, a B1 is always going to keep things throttled.
Have you ever seen the state of Kentucky deny a development like this because of traffic concerns?
It's not something I can speak to. Again, it's going to be up for the state to determine and, you know, subject to what a development plan may or may not look like. This applicant may not always be the owner. This applicant may not choose to do this. There may be a new entrance put in. You know, that's yet to be determined. As of right now, for this conversation, we just have to keep it to the zone and its prospective uses as we move forward. The development plan is its own separate thing.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions? Yes, sir?
My name is Reginald Smith, property owner, 1076 Stampin' Ground Road. Thank you for the privilege of being able to come and to address you today. While I understand the things that have been said today, I respectfully disagree. There is a veterinary clinic at the corner of Stampin' Ground Road and 460. However, the, the map that he showed earlier that had the yellow and, right, so if you notice the yellow in this area, this is all residential. So whereas first coming into the community, you do have a commercial building, zone B1. The entirety of the remainder of that area prior to the bridge is all residential. One of the beauties of living in small-town USA is the peace and tranquility that comes with our communities. To be afforded the safety, quiet, and comfort that such communities brings is what makes them appealing to those that live in large bustling cities. Georgetown is one of those jewels, those gems nestled in Scott County that gives us, our community, the ability to escape to our homes and enjoy the beauty and quiet of our neighborhood community. Changing the zoning laws would completely upend this for our community on Stampin' Ground Road. This change would allow businesses both now and the future, because when we're looking at zoning laws, we're not just looking at the current business, but what could potentially be there in the future. My home is approximately 50 yards from the building. The thing that separates my home from this commercial building is a road. So if I were to go out my door, there's a vacant lot, a road, and then I would go into this building. The beauty of this area is that from my back door, I have access to Elkhorn Creek. During the wintertime, I watch the deer as they traverse through my parking lot and go down the creek area. Having a business there would impact that. It would cause congestion and unwanted traffic, as well as the uncertainty, uncertainty of strangers being in close proximity to our homes. I don't know anyone here today, including the business owners, that would enjoy having a B1 zoned area directly across the street from their home and from their neighbor's houses. Could you imagine in your neighborhood, a vacant lot next door or house being available one day and the next day it's a bustling business? With the traffic, not only the traffic, but the logistics that would go along with a thriving business. Possibly, this business would not entail that. But to be zoned B1 would mean that another business would be there, and they would have to have the logistics of delivering equipment, delivering supplies to that particular location. This would cause congestion on that road. And also, imagine this in your neighborhood where your grandchildren play. I just would ask that you would consider the uncertainty of having strangers next door to your home where children and grandchildren play, and the safety and security concerns that we as residents of that community will have. I ask each of you today that will make this decision or this determination to consider, what if this were your neighborhood? This is where your home was, and you had to step outside of your door in the past years, a residential-only community with no businesses in eye view of your front door. But you now have to walk out your door and deal with a commercial building. Today, it's one business, no disrespect to you. But the zoning means that any B1 could come in to that area. I would ask this committee to take that into consideration. This is our home. This is our community. This is my house and my neighbor's house that are going to have to look out their door every day and no longer see a house. The house was torn down. But now we'll have to experience everything that goes along with the business, not just this business, but any future business that would be allowed to be there based upon B1 zoning. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, before you leave, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
You said the house was torn down. How long has it been since someone occupied that property? Do you know?
No, it's, it's probably been maybe a year and a half or so since that. It was, someone lived there. They moved out, I think, a couple of years ago, maybe. They moved out.
Owners kept it, they kept up the grass. They would come and trim up and things. I think they were from out of town ownership for the house. They didn't, the house being owned is not...
But nobody's lived in it for a couple of years.
Nobody's lived in that particular house. But there's, and my concern is, this is a community. There is a house where the business is currently, where they've put up the metal building. Right next door to that is another home. Across the street from that is a home. And then our home is right there as well. Directly across the church, the street from the church, there are homes. So there are no businesses, even though you look at the map and you see on the corner there, there is a B1 building. The other building that you see there is not within eye shot of our properties. It's on the other, it's around the bend on the other side of the creek. So when we look at the scope of businesses coming in, this is, this is, businesses coming into our residential neighborhood. I understand growth. I understand development. I want to see Scott County boom, boom. But this is right outside of our door, right? And I believe that there would be other areas that would be better suited, that would not infringe upon the community environment that we have there. And so that is my concern. That, that's my concern. Regardless of the dollar value of the homes there, this is our community. This is where our children raise. It's been a neighborhood for years, family-owned property for years, right? And now, all of a sudden, we're going to have a business directly across the street from us. There's, there's another vacant lot there. So I can only imagine the parking, that becoming a parking lot. We've got a business here, this becomes a parking lot. Then when I step outside of my door, within 25 feet, there's going to be another business. Because if this is, is zoned B1, that's what, that's what potentially could happen. I could walk outside of my door, and right next door to my home will be a business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that also, just to reiterate, also with the park being down there, if you be zoned, if you zoned this for business, that takes away from the community's park structure. Because that is a place where families daily, if you go down there, you just drive down there, if you go out 460 and turn right on Stampin' Ground Road, you'll see the veterinary business. You'll see homes, the community church, beautiful setting, any type of view. And then when you go down and round, you see the park. Somebody's probably down there fishing now, probably somebody's with their kids down there now. Somebody's down there walking the trail down there now. If you zone this for business and start taking away properties, it's also going to interfere with the peace and tranquility and the getaways of the people. I worked in Toyota for a decade, and I know when I need a quiet time and a quiet space, the park is a great place, stick your feet in that cool water with the spring there. If you have the kids there, they're fishing, you have kayak fishing, different things like that. It's going to impact a greater deal of the community here in Georgetown than just our direct neighborhood. So that's something to also take into consideration. So you, the park is a beautiful place. Like I said, it's probably people down there now doing some things. And, you know, it's the future. We're definitely looking at taking into consideration what the future will look like and zoning it for business. That's what Georgetown is, is happening in Georgetown. You've got residential, and you've got business. Most of this stuff where houses and apartment complexes are now, I cut it back when back in the eighties, in all these lots and all these farms. Now they're residential properties, now they're big neighborhoods and businesses following. So we don't want to lose everything that is near and dear to the heart of the peoples of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brett, you mentioned, you talked about the throttle that B1 puts on, those B1 zoning specifically. What are the, can you speak just a little bit more broadly about the?
It's geared specifically towards, you know, neighborhood service providers, low-intensity use. Again, it also does allow for some, speaking back to the future land use map, it could be used for community purposes now or in the future, whether that may be, you know, maybe the school system buys it. Maybe, you know, the city or Parks and Rec is interested in the future. It would still be zoned appropriately for, you know, community uses. You know, just like a little neighborhood store or a professional office of some kind, you know? Not maybe dissimilar to some of the things you see in downtown. Small, local, neighborhood geared service providers. We're not talking service stations, we're not talking body shops, not gas stations, anything of that nature. Big box stores, restaurants, none of that would be, you know, permissible in B1. I hope that kind of answers things.
Yes, thank you.
But it could be small grocery.
In the sense, like, say, you know, for example, you know, something like, you know, a Highview Meats establishment, potentially. It would have to fit the definition and limitation of the ordinance. If it were deemed by, you know, staff or yourselves that this use is just too much, it's just too much. You know, just like B5 leans on context, so does B1, you know? Neighborhood commercial is a very specific term. You know, it's not meant to be businesses that attract people from Florence or, you know, Sadiville or maybe even Stampin' Ground proper. It's just meant to be small, local service providers, entrepreneurs, local business, things of that nature. And again, you know, in the future, it could complement the future land use map directly. It could be a, you know, extension of the park. You know, a building as such could be used by Parks and Recreation Department or the schools. It's all, you know, again, this is all development plan stuff. And I understand the concerns that moving from residential to business. But, you know, there's also in residential zones, homes that open, home occupations with board of adjustment cases. So residential use does not completely eliminate limited commercial use. Home occupation is essentially, you know, meant to be like a neighborhood service provider of sorts. It's low-impact, you know, to the certain area. So to be honest with you, you know, it doesn't necessarily eliminate potential for small-scale commercial use. Of course, it's by permit, you know, and subject to, you know, examination by staff and, you know, the board of adjustments or yourselves, just like any business that would submit a development plan for this site after the zone change. If it doesn't make sense and doesn't comply, it doesn't make sense and it doesn't comply, whether that be staff, yourselves, or the state that deems it's too high of an intensity of use for the area.
Something you might recall, Charlie, after the rest of due to. McFarland's Grocery, B1, Scott's Grocery, B1.
Right.
The little grocery across from Robby's, B1. Traditionally, they were all mom and pop grocery stores.
Yeah.
But they are.
But that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, they did not cater to the most repurposed, they, they're just very limited in, in any kind of traffic. In fact, most of them are literally walking in the neighborhood.
I guess Singer Gardens was probably B1, although it might have been A, I don't know.
But you have a high school there, large high school, and you have a park. So it's not going to be a grocery store, something like of that nature that's, you know, welcoming the generalized public. You're not going to keep, you know, the few residences that are there. That's not the only people that you're going to be attracting. And that would basically be to devise your own business if that's all you expect. If all you expect is a company or business where a few residents is right there on either side of the creek, then you'd be doing yourself a disservice for, you know, that kind of a business in itself. Because, but with the school being there, I don't know what is being planned for. The county roads department is making an addition over there, you know, if there's going to be more employees over there. And like I said, the park is probably, probably has people there. So if you didn't, this, if you didn't cut off your business hours, you know, you do yourself a disservice. If you had to cut your business services off before we came down for this meeting. You know, because that's what you're in business for, is to make money, attract people, get them in to buy your wares.
Well, but, but the Stevens have said they're not relying on neighborhood business walk-in. It's going to be storing of their equipment and all.
We're talking, we're discussing future as well.
I understand, that's why I asked that question. And then we would have to deal with that at that time. But it, it could be a small grocery store or something, but it could be a gas station.
You, it's like a home remodeling business?
Yeah, it's essentially basically an oversized garage is what we've got. I don't know if you guys have the lot picture, if we drove by there. The lot was very grown up. We spent about $50,000 just trying to clean up what, what was existing.
I can touch on the house. We were talking about the home that was made in for over 10 years prior to this project. The roof was falling in, it was a brick wall, it was overgrown, it was very damaged.
We bought it originally, I was going to give it to my mother, but it was in such bad shape, there was no sign.
Renovate it. So people would be coming in, looking at a tile sample or a carpet?
It would be by appointment.
Picking out, yeah, appointment, picking out things for a house they're building or a house you're renovating?
Yeah.
Like if I was reading in the shower, then they come in to pick out closets, towels. We would display them at different angles, basically.
But it's mostly just going to be him going in and out. We just live in a subdivision, so we're very clean people. And we didn't want to, you know, try to have trailers and stuff, you know, at our home. So we decided to flip the use of the property to that.
I'll tell you three.
We're very clean folks.
Three tenths of an acre doesn't really sound like big enough to have anything parked on it.
Parked.
Three tenths of an acre is almost, the building is almost going to take up every corner to where there's no space to park something else.
I think you're talking about putting it inside, inside. All the storage will be inside the building?
Yeah.
The equipment?
Yeah. Well, you still got a backup truck and trailer up to it to get some stuff out of it. Good point.
There's an open room with the set back, so you could, you could turn the trailer over.
I think all of that would be for the development plan, probably.
It is a small lot, there's no question about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we shaved most of the, because it was pretty much all the open we were taught. We shaved a lot of that off and really opened up the space of where you actually have room to live around.
Sounds like a good place for one of those little 400-square-foot houses.
Tiny house.
I think all of those points will be discussed in the development plan, should it be approved and should they decide to move forward, right? In terms of getting trucks in and out or whatever, right?
Yes, ma'am. To my point exactly, she mentioned about their neighborhood. Well, this is our neighborhood. Not to have a trailer in their neighborhood, this is a building across the street from my house. This is a commercial neighborhood, whereas in their neighborhood, they don't want a trailer housing their goods. In my neighborhood, we don't want a building across the street from my house housing goods. If you looked at that picture again, it's all residential area there. That's not one commercial building in the scope of where our homes are. So to rezone that would mean that now our neighborhood now also has commercial buildings or commercial businesses in our neighborhood. I, I respect the fact that they're wanting to expand their business. And I expect, I respect the fact that Georgetown wants to grow. But I would ask you a, a, as a committee, to respect the fact that this is our neighborhood. This is, this is our community that we're wanting to put a commercial building across the street from, and all of the things that go along with a business. It's not just a building that's going to be a storage building, right? And in, in respect to the B1, it says that, B1, it says retail sales for neighborhood consumption. I don't see where this is neighborhood consumption. Consumer services for neighborhood consumption is the second one. Professional business and government, governmental offices and laboratories. So I don't see where this business falls under the scope of the B1 as is stated in 44, 41, B1 4411 as well. And so in respect to that, I, I don't think that this business would service our community. If that's the, the, the goal for a B1 is to service the local residents in the community, I don't see where it would fall under the scope of that either. Thank you.
Thank you.
The zone that the applicant has chosen to apply for, that's at their peril. It's also any business that may or may not say, oh, I want to go in there. Again, they're subject to development plan and further approvals. If it does not fit, it doesn't fit. You know, at this point, all we're considering is the zone change. Could the zone itself make sense or not? To be honest, these folks could receive a zone change today and sell it tomorrow, which is why we consider the zone. Context and concept is important. It's fairly customary for any zone change applicant to provide something. It shows good intent, it shows what they intend to do. But to be honest, and to no disrespect to the applicants themselves or any other zone change applicant, they're not beholden to that concept. So step one is consider the zone and the zone change. Moving forward, contingent on approval, you have to evaluate every business individually, just like we do any other area in town. And, you know, if these folks or any other applicant were to receive a zone change, you know, there's high potential that, you know, their development plan for this concept they provided for the zone they've chosen and received doesn't work. You know, there's always that potential, it's, it's, it just is what it is. So all due respect to this applicant and other applicants, context and concept is important. Much appreciated, but at this point, we are only considering the zone.
Let me ask you, you talked about the board of adjustment process earlier. I guess, having been on the board of adjustment or familiar with, you know, requests that will come there for a home occupation business. So if this was a home or if it was a house, right, even if someone wasn't living there, could this same thing be accomplished through that route?
As, you know, just like with this board, all applications are just that, they're applications.
Right, I mean, but that, I guess what I'm trying to weigh is, if I'm going to pick where it would come through, if I'm a neighbor, I would rather it come through here because then you actually have the opportunity to actually view the development plan and, you know, it's a much deeper review. Not that the board of adjustments is not deep, but it's completely different.
Board of adjustments cases aren't necessarily beholden to development plans. However, they are held to standards essentially based on scope and impact. When and if a home occupation of any sort receives approval, certain standards and expectations are set. Business hours, traffic expected, et cetera. And that's, at which point the enforcement occurs as if they step beyond what may be the scope of their approval.
Right.
With a zone change in a development plan, essentially all that's handled upfront. You know, the development standards are set forth by the zone. The restrictions or requirements are set forth, you know, by whichever governing body would do ingress egress, in this case, the state. You know, other service providers of whether or not they can serve the proposed business, you know, depending on the utilities and the scale of the utilities they need. So yes, to your point, could similar operations occur in residential zones by, you know, conditionally used permit for home occupation, potentially. Again, everything's subject to approval. So, you know, again, residential designation does not eliminate business activity at small scale in a neighborhood. We have home occupations permitted of all kinds all around the county. And that's not to dismiss any of these neighborhood concerns, I get it, absolutely, 100%.
No, I'm just asking the question.
Yes, but, you know, with all intents and purposes, B1 is the most restrictive zone. Staff would not have recommended approval if they thought maybe, you know, a use of this sort could be beneficial or non-detrimental to the area. And again, still also provides potential for quasi-public uses as set forth by the future land use map and comprehensive plan.
I beg to differ with one thing, because this is the community. And if the building had not been erected prior to this meeting, we wouldn't be having this discussion to this extent. And I started it because of the money they put into it. If they had built a house or considered the business prior to, because what they did, they worked hard, it looks great, leveled, operated things, and the money they put into it, expect them probably have all of them or way or somebody who lives out in the land has come down and spoken to. And so that's no respect to that. But if they jumped the gun, built that, put that building up there, then that's why we're going to extend it, we're going to end potentially it being a business and in future businesses, because if that building had not been there right now, then they would see the need to be so invested in our community as we're concerned for residents and homeowners, just like they would be concerned for anybody else here for their business, for their homes and residents. You're going to say something if a building is put up across the street from your house. You're going to say something if a business or it's put up that has the potential of drawing people that are undesirable, because we know the issues that face every community, small communities in Kentucky and buildings like that can attract people. And the kids are there all the time around that area. If the building wasn't already up, then would you be going to this extent? That was not our problem in the community.
Okay, we have discussed this, I think, on both sides. We've heard from pros and cons. I will take a motion for approval or denial, and we'll go from there. I'll make a motion that we deny ZMA 2024-33.
Can I second it?
I have a motion by Mr. Garrett, and a second by Mr. Jesse.
Does it need grounds on which to deny it, Mr. Bargains, in terms of?
Uh, yes, we should, yes.
Since it met the ordinances?
Potential traffic, safety, and future use for other incoming businesses.
If you're saying, just a suggestion, Mr. Garrett, but if you're saying that future use, then you're also saying that B1 is not appropriate.
For that area?
For that area.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, B1 is for local consumption. So I, I think you need to say in addition to that, that B1 is not appropriate. And it's difficult because B1 is for the neighborhood, and so that's why we have lots of B1s in various neighborhoods. And for example, the ones, the examples I gave, there's two in the same neighborhood. But maybe what we're talking about and putting there isn't exactly B1. But maybe what we're talking about, putting there, isn't exactly B-1, but I think you need to put that in.
Wouldn't that be the development plan discussion and not the zone discussion?
No, once zoning is in place, then whatever's appropriate.
No, not that piece of it, but you said what we're talking about, putting there isn't appropriate, that's the development plan discussion.
All due respect, like Mr. Smith just mentioned, the building's already there, so, I mean, we're presented somewhat of a fait accompli. And, and I think that enters in, it would not enter in otherwise. It would simply be, what, what use you talking about is that a B-1 use? Well, this one's kind of locked in to that B-1 use because there's a building there. But the motion needs to have a little bit more reasoning, and I, and I think that's the direction that you seem to be going.
And also, in the staff report, it says, therefore, the proposed change is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, future land use map for that area. But then they get on over here and say, but.
It don't have to be a tremendously important but to overcome that first point, Ryan.
What was the but, Rhett?
It does speak to the goals and objectives, the comprehensive plan, regardless of that non-pro. And to be honest, after a further kind of deeper review when I was preparing my presentation of the zone itself, while B-1 is not, you know, it is a business zone technically, it does provide for quasi-public uses, which is what the future land use map calls for. So I found staff included that that was in support of that as well, that there's not only neighborhood potential commercial use, but also use that would complement with the future land use map calls for it.
So I need to amend my motion to say, therefore, the proposed change does not, is not consistent with future land use? I mean, with comprehensive plan?
That's what I think you were saying when you said, what you're concerned with is future use for this zone. Well, if B-1 is supposed to be serving only that neighborhood, it's going to be compatible with that zone. Well, if you've got uses coming in, though, that aren't necessarily, then that's not the appropriate zone. I think that's what you were saying, but I think you just need to get a little bit more specific. So I think what is proposed is not consistent with B-1 and not appropriate for this area.
That's what I'm saying.
I thought that was, I wasn't sure, but I thought that was.
All right, so if we, if you vote yes, you're voting for a denial of this applicant. Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Vest, or he's not here, Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Singer?
No.
And the chair votes yes. And so that is a?
Is that three and three?
Four to two, we got six people here?
Yeah.
Make sure our numbers are right, four to nine. And so with that, I will close the public hearing. And that being the last item on the agenda for tonight, I will also take a?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second. Made by Ms. Singer and second by Mr. Garrett, and so we close the.